Good afternoon, the time is six o'clock. We're going to call at this time.
A meeting to order at this time.
At this time, if you could please stand for an invocation.
And the Pledge of Allegiance.
And the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'll go to get started with the invocation.
So I'll go to get started with the invocation.
Feel it by your heads. Lord Jesus Christ, thank you for allowing us to be here today. Thank you for allowing us to be here today in your presence. We ask that you give us the clarity. Give us the clarity. To make the right decision. To make the best interest for the city of Los Fresnos. For the city of Los Fresnos. We also ask that you protect our mighty Falcons this Friday. As they play Edinburgh here at Los Fresnos. We also pray that you look over our community. And you give them health, good health. And you make them prosperous. And we ask for all this in your name.
Amen.
Do we have any visitors remarks? Do we have any visitors remarks?
No.
At this time, we'll have a public hearing. To disseminate information concerning the stormwater program. And receive input from the public. Mark?
Thanks, Mayor, I'll start off and then. Questions from you or the public. Stormwater is all about pollution prevention and identifying potential hazards around our community. Includes public outreach and education. We do various mail outs with our utility bill. Drinking water confidence report has information on there as well as our city website. We have some rack cards that are here, library and different places around town. I think most of you know that all of our stormwater eventually ends up in Brownsville Ship Channel. Well, let me rephrase that. From Henderson Road, south, it goes to Brownsville Ship Channel. And Henderson Road is the point where it goes north and then that ends up in the Arroyo. So it travels a long ways to get there. If you'll look at the, some of the things in your packet and Jackie's putting them up on there, the inlets and the signs that we have around those, that one on the bottom there is on every inlet so that people know that, hey, this isn't, this goes to a waterway. It's not a place to dump gas, chemicals, people do all kinds of stuff. One of the things that I see that probably education needs to be better is mowing. People will mow and just, they don't want it left in their yard, so they mow it into the street and that ends up in a drain and could stop up drains, so. We look for illicit discharges, our staff, PD does it as well, not just public works. And that would be like in a clear day, I saw one today, I was driving and then I saw a bunch of water running down the curb and I go, it hasn't rained, there shouldn't be any, and so I went to it and it was someone, a sprinkler system had messed up and so it was draining. That's a good example of just paying attention and seeing. We do have a, a street sweeper that is in the shop right now. We're waiting for some hydraulic lines and some of the pistons on the sweepers to get repaired, the brushes, but hopefully in a few weeks that'll be out and we'll get that back into a normal rotation throughout the city. On page eight, you can see there where we do education at Earth Day, so that, that's very popular. And really that's it, just trying to make people aware that drains are for the proper stuff, not anything. And I'll be open for questions, or maybe Raul will can, if I can.
Mark, thank you for letting us know about the storm sweeper. Cause I know we had talked about that the other day as well. You know, sweeping up some of the streets. From debris. Which can help, which can help prevent these. Things to get clogged, so. Things to get clogged, so. Is there a rotation for that? Or is that like an on need basis?
No, they've had a normal rotation. Normal rotation from each quadrant in the city, but we can advertise that once we get it going.
Thank you, Mark. Board have any questions about this? Or is there anybody in the public who would like to? Maybe talk about this topic? Okay, okay. Guess we're good to move forward. Guess we're good to move forward. Thank you, Raul, for being here. Thank you, Raul, for being here. Appreciate it. Okay, at this time, we'll move on to the consent agenda items. We have a total of nine. Is there any that the board would like for, is there a motion to be made? Is there a motion to be made?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I am raising your hand. And all those who oppose do the same. Motion carries. Motion carries. Action item number one reads. Consideration and action to be released from the Los Fresnos. Extraterrestrial jurisdiction. By a landowner. With property located on Bingley Road. Which is FM twenty-eight ninety-three. And Kendall Lane. Mark?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you might remember we discussed this, I guess at the end of the year, November, December, where we had a similar request. And the way the state law reads now is that it's, you, the landowners can request to be removed from the ETJ, and so that's what this request is. It's, they're here, and so if there's any questions from this specifically, but there's the location, it's north, probably you can, if you know where County Park is, just south of that, on the other side, not, not right on the road, but it's inside a little bit.
Mark, does that mean if in the future, we tend to develop in that direction and the property owner puts a submission that they want something from the city, we don't have to do anything for them, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, any questions from the city in regards to them being excluded from the ETJ? Again, that, that is the, the goal of the city is to move in that direction and as the causeway, that second causeway starts to form, there may be some business in the future, but they can always request to be added back into the ETJ at some point, correct?
What, with the request to be put back in, how many developers or how many times has it ever been done? Once we release them from an ETJ, do they ever request to come back?
Well, this is a new law that just took effect, so we haven't had any. We have developers and property owners asked for, you know, to be included all the time here, all, all back in here, that's the way that's happened from a request to developer over by eight oh three in that area, it's been a request by a developer, but being asked to be removed and then later asked to come back in hasn't, because it's just a relatively new law.
Obviously, it hasn't happened before, it hasn't happened, it's a new law. I really don't foresee it happening. I think if anything, people want to get removed from the ETJ for a certain reason, than not be asking to be brought back in, I just don't see, I don't see it moving forward in the future. We being able to move towards five-ten and, and that being incorporated into the city limits if we ever do move that way.
Who knows how long it'll take? I mean, we don't know what's gonna happen the next twenty, thirty years, what, what people, business, we don't know, and I'm just kinda saying because development will eventually grow.
Or the law change again.
Yeah, the law could change.
I feel confident that at some point in the future, the law will change.
What would be a reason to get out of an ETJ? I mean, they're not, they're already in the county, they're not even part of the city, so.
Is that them right here?
I guess you could ask them, but the reason would be is that you don't have to worry about being annexed at some future time, but that's already against the law.
Kinda curious.
We can't do that now, so.
Okay, yeah. Hello, thanks for being here. What's your name? Oh, plant the button, the button, that's there, it's, yeah.
Right here.
Right there.
Okay. Isidro Fernandez, with HLG Plan Review Services. I'm here with my client, the owner of the property. And let me just go back a little bit as far as the, yes, you're absolutely right. The only way you can make this work is if the law changes. Right now, the law allow us to request the release or to opt out from the ETJ. What I have seen in other cities is that they have what is called a future annexation plan, and that can be used to project your future growth. And therefore, you can, through your regular meetings, you can decide which way the city wants to grow. And for us, requesting the release is basically the advantage of dealing only with one entity and to expedite the property. Now, if this was the other way around, we will definitely be part of Los Fresnos. Why? Because of the regulations. Just to show or to bring one item, I believe you have a fifty-foot road right of waste, the county is sixty. So to us, we're losing ten feet, five on either side. However, because of the distance from your city limits, we feel that it's, it's gonna be a while before the city of Los Fresnos can actually provide us with any building permits or any additional services that we can request. So basically, that's the only, the only reason we're asking for the word opt out, the release. But if we were to be right next to your city limits, we will definitely be part of Los Fresnos.
That makes perfect sense, I understand that, and yeah, I get it. Thank you for that explanation.
Well, I appreciate your words, sir. Much more than other developers who are better than to our ETJs and wish to be pumped out and not included in our city limits. It's good to hear that some people would want to be included. Would want to be included. You know, it's shame, it's shame that sometimes we, that sometimes we haven't gone out there. We haven't gone out there, right? We were not there. There is a lot of help that needs to be done there. On the ERTJ, there's go up to five-ten. Probably a little past that. And still not comfortable with the release itself, just because, I'm the type of person that wants to take care of people. And once we release you guys, it really does also.
Free us from that responsibility.
Free us from that responsibility. And I don't think that's a responsibility I'm willing to.
Want to give up so easily.
Want to give up so easily.
Just for that benefit.
Just for that benefit.
With the future.
Assistance to that neighborhood.
Is that understandable? Is that understandable?
What size area is this? What size area is this we're talking about?
Is anybody else on the board have any questions or comments? Or is there a motion to be made? Or is there a motion to be made?
I'll make a motion to decline the release of the ETJ.
He's made a motion to decline. He's made a motion to decline. Yeah, Mark, go ahead. Yeah, Mark, go ahead.
We, we don't have, we don't have a choice in the matter. If you'll recall, this is state law, so it's, it's, we, we can't decline it. We cannot like it, but we, it's a state law and we have to follow the state law. It's automatic release as long as they've met the requirements of it.
And the requirements are to just notify us?
Notify us, submit all of this paperwork that's attached here and.
I mean, I get it, it's, it's not something we want to hear, but I understand his point of view and I understand the property owner's point of view. So it's not that I like it, it's just now we have no choice. Okay, so at this point.
Yeah, so why do we even have a, I mean.
Because the state law says we still have to take action on it. And even though the state law says you have no choice.
So really, it should read consideration and mandatory action, okay. Yes, sir, go ahead, go ahead.
Yes, and, and they're absolutely right. Unfortunately, the way the law has been written, it shows a caption, it says, and I'm just reading, quoting what they wrote, not that we represent what it reads, if the city fails to do so, the property will be released by operation of law under section forty-two.
So it still happens regardless?
Yes.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the petition.
Thank you, motion made. Thank you, motion made. Second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Raise your hand. And all those who oppose do the same. You abstain? Motion carries, sir. Thank you very much for being here with your property owner. We appreciate you guys and hope you guys have a good evening, okay? Thank you again. Alrighty, moving on. Alrighty, moving on. So we got action item number two. Consideration and action. To approve the first and second reading. Of an ordinance, releasing property from the city's extraterrestrial jurisdiction.
This is the same thing, it just puts it in an ordinance.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to consider the action approved by first, second reading of the ordinance.
Okay, motion is made. And second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. And all those who oppose do the same. You abstain? Is yours abstain? Oh, he raised his hand, okay. Okay, motion carries, thank you. Action item number three reads, consideration and action to enter into Estoppel Agreement, TERS number two. Mark?
We'll pass on this for tonight and not take any action. It'll need to come up at another future meeting with a TERS board meeting first and then this action item, so we'll just take no action tonight.
All right, thank you for that. No action taken on action item number three until further notice. Action item number four reads, consideration and action to approve payment for emergency repairs for a collapsed sewer line and manhole. Mark?
This is the area over here in our, to the east of us and a little bit south, that I sent you all information on, that it collapsed and it's about twenty-one, twenty-two feet deep. Couldn't find any contractors at all in the valley that would, would deal with it, because it's all unknown when you get that deep. RM Walzor Company said they would do it, but on, you know, as, as I go basis, water, water level is about seven feet. So they had to pump water down to pass the twenty-one foot where the line was, which means it, it took about six weeks of continual pumping. If you drill by there, there's continual water being released. What they have to do is they have to pump the water in that whole area down so that it's away. Anytime you get showers, which we got a bunch, it comes back up and then you just have to keep working at it. So it's a lot of money, it's not overbilled by any stretch of imagination, but it just takes a lot whenever. The other thing I'm sharing with the mayor is, when you get that deep, you have the steel barriers on either side so that it doesn't collapse on someone, and also getting that deep, you have to wear air protection so that you can breathe that, that low, that far down, so.
No, it was a, it was a faulty developer thing that came back and turned into a bigger problem.
I think that just the, there's some quicksand in that area and it wasn't stabilized, maybe as good as it should be. I think they went back, stabilized it very well.
You wanna, you wanna, you wanna push the button real quick, Commissioner? Councilman? You wanna push the button, Councilman? So that the public can hear?
When it was initially done, the city passed, passed everything, said it was okay and fine?
Yeah.
And there was no kind of guarantee by the developer when he did it?
One year.
Well, it's been much longer than a year.
They all do one year, but it's been eight, I think, or nine.
Okay. Yeah, it was pretty, I, I remember seeing that crane and it was really deep in there and it was just, water was pumping out for, for a long time. And, all right, any questions about this? Are we good to take care of this? No, there's not really much, it's already, work's been done, it's been repaired, and now it's time to pay the bill.
We'll watch the bill.
So is there a motion to be made or any more questions or comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the payment for emergency repairs.
Second. Motion made and second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Raise your hand. All those who oppose do the same. Motion carries. Moving on to action item five. Moving on to action item five. Consideration and action to approve funding. Preparation for the irrigation canal project.
If y'all remember, if y'all remember, we paid a thou, no, we paid for the initial, was ten thousand dollars, we, we shared it with Cameron County Irrigation District Ten and Baby Irrigation District Number Eleven. We applied for the grant, we were denied, we, well, not denied, but we came out in a list and the funding went to this far and we were right here. So what we're wanting to do is reapply, doesn't take a lot of work because we use the same information. We are putting some, some information that, from the Texas Water Development Board that they say might help get us to be on the top end of receiving the funding, so each district will share a thousand dollars. Cameron County Irrigation District Ten has approved theirs and Baby has approved theirs, so the two thousand's already set aside. This is just to do, do our share, another thousand.
Any questions or comments from the board or if there's a motion to be made?
I'll make a motion to approve the item number five.
I'll second.
Motion made and second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. All those who oppose do the same. All those who oppose do the same. Motion carries. Action item six reads, consideration and action to approve a resolution. Casting votes for candidates. To serve on the Cameron. To serve on the Cameron. Appraisal District Board of Governors. Mark?
This is, this is the new system, we did it for the first time last year, this time is, because they staggered the terms, and so that's why these people only had a one-year term. We have thirty votes out of, woo, a bunch, so we really don't have a big, out of two thousand votes, but hey, every vote counts and it's important to vote for who you believe should be nominated. The list, there's eight names, you can see there. All I mentioned is to consider our Commissioner David Garza, just because he is our Commissioner that represents this area and would have as, as much of a reason to support Los Fresnos and whatever may be our benefit as anyone. Not to say the others wouldn't, but his, he's got a little bit more tied to this area. I don't know the other people, so, and I'm not saying that they wouldn't.
Do we, do we know who, who's currently on that board or is it up, is it a board that you said they were staggered out?
I think right now David Garza is there and Alejandra Aldrete is, is there. I think she represents Brownsville School District.
TSE.
TSE, that's right.
So is there a, a vote that one of the members would like to make?
I would like to vote for Alejandro Aldrete.
Okay, do we each have to say a name, Mark? Or do we just vote on one? Or do we?
You can, y'all can decide, it's up to you. You can decide to give all the votes to one person, split them all up, or whatever you decide.
So Alejandro Aldrete, I'll, I'll also do Alejandro Aldrete as well?
I'll do our Commissioner David.
I'll do Alejandro Aldrete.
David Garza, our Commissioner.
Okay, and we have two more Councilmen?
I'll go to David Garza.
Okay. David Garza, so three and three. Fifteen fifteen, it's an equal split?
It's twelve. Twelve votes. Six six.
Yeah. I thought you said we got thirty votes. You said we got thirty, right?
Half and half.
So thirty, so half and half. I don't know, Mark, Mark said thirty, right, Mark?
We're at twelve. Who else?
Okay, so six and six.
Ah, yeah, I just did it wrong.
Okay.
It's six and six.
Six and six? Yes, Alejandro Aldrete. What do you mean, do we motion enough like that?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to split six votes for Alejandro Aldrete and six votes for Commissioner David Garza.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made and second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye, raise your hand. Aye. All those who oppose do the same. Motion carries. Moving on to action item seven, discussion and possible action to choose an individual for twenty-twenty-five Citizen of the Year Program. I was telling Mark a little while ago about this one, when I, when I saw this, the first thing that came to mind was Daniel Avila, with owner of Herm's Barbecue. I don't know if you've noticed, but that guy just doesn't stop with anything with the community, he's like the first one there. So it's just a name I wanted to throw out there. I'm not sure what other ideas of citizens that you all have, but I think the work he's done this year has been phenomenal.
I, I agree with you, Mayor, Mr. Avila does a great job. Are we voting now or is it just to consideration for next month?
We put it on to consent for discussion and possible action if you wanted to, but we need to make a decision by next month, so you could lap, the first year you.
Yeah, we wait.
You waited until December, you talked about it, and then you thought about it and then made it official in December, we recognized him in January last year.
Yeah, that's where I was last year, I was a little confused because I know we all sent you, we all sent you a recommendation, you sent forwarded everybody's recommendation to us. Just last year was a little odd because I thought it was gonna be run the same way, so that's why I'm trying to figure out how this month, this year, we're gonna try and run it. I really liked the way we did it the first time, where we all sent a recommendation through this month, because I think to think about doing it right now at the whim, it's kind of, especially for an honor that we're giving.
Yeah, I just thought the name, because that's the first name that came to my mind, you know?
I agree, I agree, Mayor, I mean, there's nothing wrong. Mr. Avila's a great person. I don't know, so I guess over this past, next month, I'll kind of think about that and send it to you, and I guess you'll forward it to us.
Well, that's his thought, let me see what the rest of the council thinks. What do y'all think? I mean, you guys want to share some ideas of some names or do you want to?
I like that name and I also like to see if we can do something like what we did last year, start pushing those, maybe have something that we can all recognize, like in, in your case, what he said, what is it that he did for, for the city and if anybody else like wants to do that.
Yeah, next week, we can make a decision, but just wanted to throw that name out there.
I know, just on, just discussion, Councilman and Mayor, I guess since we started this position, over the last few years, we've gave it for somebody for like a lifetime achievement of helping Los Fresnos. Mr. Avila is a wonderful person, I know, we, as a matter of fact, his wife was my student. But I think, I think if we keep the tradition of doing a lifelong commitment of Los Fresnos, somebody who's, we have plenty of people here who have put forty, fifty, sixty years of their life into this town, just as a recommendation, obviously, all of y'all can recommend whoever you want, but just since we've started it that way, I think it's best that we keep it in that fashion.
Yeah, and that's a good idea, it's just, you know, like in football, whenever they have a good season, they make Player of the Year, and I just think, you know, some of the stuff he's done has been very, very, something to note, you know what I mean? And of course, come up with some more names, give us some ideas, I just, that's the only name that keeps popping up in my head over and over and over.
Mark, so when do we have to decide on this one?
Next week, I mean, next month?
Next month?
By next month, because they only give us about four weeks to get stuff together and make it official, so we can, we can do it in December.
I didn't push my button, we can do it in December, so if you'll recall, when we, when this idea first came up, I asked that we, that y'all, because this is y'all's deal, it's not staff's, that come up with kind of rules of the game, so to speak, and to Luis's point, you know, it makes sense to, to do it the same way each time and so. You know, it makes sense to to do it the same way each time and uh um so maybe at the same time, you'll, y'all come up with how you want to do it, but this is your deal, so you can do it how you want.
Yeah, I guess um we're still laying out and ironing out how this is getting played out. Um I would recommend, I don't know if some point, sometime, Jackie or somebody may have to do the, a list of requirements or whatever the, whatever that is, right? Um but I would prefer it being a lifelong uh testament to Los Fresnos, what lifelong means, I don't know, right? Um but um that way, because there is a lot of people here.
Well, like, okay, sixty-five or over, you know, th- thirty, forty years, I just think of, thinking of a citizen who has done a lot. It doesn't matter if they're old or young, it's recognizing somebody who's done.
I know we do that, we do that already with the um.
Because what you're saying is a little too difficult to kind of say that this is a criteria.
Well, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of people who have already put in many years, I mean, not not singly not Mr. Avila.
Give some names or something like that, I'm just.
Well, I mean, I'm not here to say names, I'm not prepared to say names, Mayor, I'm just here to.
But you understand what I'm saying with him, is that what he's done, right?
He's a wonderful person, it's not the issue. Um the issue is, how are we gonna structure this um for the future? Um so that Mark and us and when all of us or whoever's not here, right in the future as Councilmen um have a, a plan already in place of how this is done. Um I don't know, I mean, that's for us to decide.
Do the same thing as last year, send you names and then.
Two years ago.
We'll put it in the agenda and make a decision.
Yeah, I think that'll be better.
I have the only, the only, the only name that I come with is Juan Munoz.
Let's make Juan Munoz a citizen of the year.
I'm not gonna be here no more, so I'll, I'll, that, by that time, you can name me.
Well, uh.
I've been here for twenty years, so I think I deserve something like that.
Do we ever do anything to recognize businesses in this town?
Yeah.
And that's what we did with Mr. Avila not a few, few months back.
Yeah, we we did recognize him, that's right. Yeah.
What business we do last?
Well, we did Herms, right? Um and we recognized him for the stuff that he did up in in Austin. And then when there was a death of a student, he went ahead and, you know, and then he continues that, that's why I was just naming a name, but there's a lot of people in this town that we can come up with some good names that have done a lot of good.
I think, I think, Mark, uh you know, uh when we get the agenda like this one, we should have already had a a a name because.
Well, yeah, I think we're, that's what we're. Maybe in the next time, we'll get it like in, like in September, we'll start putting this on there so that by October, we can already have the names to think about and in November, I'm just saying, I don't know.
What I'm saying is, we have, we had the agenda for a week and we should have read the agenda and and.
And that was the only name that popped up in my.
I, I know that uh that you popped up, I have popped up.
Um I would.
But we should, we should read the agenda and have something for for.
Then are we gonna consider today, because if it is, I'll, I'll, I would mention a name right now.
No, no, I'm just saying that when things like this happen, like come out in the agenda, we should, you know, we get the agenda almost a week before, so we should, we. Yeah, recommendations is.
And that's why I had mine, I didn't know what you guys were thinking.
Wait, yeah. So then we, I I would. Um well, I guess, so are we in, are we making recommendations now to vote?
No, no, because we're not prepared, we'll have to wait to the next one. But it's good, what he's saying is that we had a week to come in with a name and we're all acting like, well, let's put a name together and we'll do it for next week, I just thought maybe y'all, y'all had names that you can throw out here like I did, but I guess not.
Well, I guess.
As I was saying, it looks like we were already gonna select somebody, we already had a list in the way this read. It should have read recommendations.
No, but when you, when you look at the packet, it it doesn't say that, discuss.
Possible action.
Well, um I guess I'll, I'll just say my name now, uh just for future recommendations of.
Throw it out there, I mean, that's good.
Yeah, Ms. Julia, Ms. Julia Castillo from Julia's Restaurant.
Okay, so that's a good name, we appreciate you throwing that name out there, so now we have another name to think about.
Okay, so then.
Okay, so um.
In other words, we are sending the name this week, that way we can make a decision next month and then on January, it's when we do, is that correct, Mark? Yes, okay.
Yes, you, you make a decision in January and then.
No, in December, and then January, we, we.
And then, yeah, I know, I'm confused.
Who's gonna nominate Mark Mylan to be the Citizen of the Year, Mark? All right, so at least we're having some discussion, which is what um the action item reads. But possible action, I guess not today, but uh we at least come up with some ideas and we'll take a vote next week, but um other than that, no action taken at this time, Mark, other than discussion. Uh so we'll go ahead and move forward with the acknowledgement of the city managers' reports, with that said, Mark, uh any updates that you would like to provide the city? Provide us?
Yeah, I would like to uh just mention on drainage, um we've had a section in here that has been the same for quite a while with uh Drainage District Number One. Uh it seems that we're, we're moving forward with some, some good things. Uh hasn't happened this part of the uh, the uh district, Drainage District, yes, but it's happening in Brownsville and in some county areas that were uh very, had some big drainage issues, uh and so they chose some areas that were uh more problematic than what we have, so I I do think that it's coming, uh I think it's a a good, good sign. Uh good things are happening in that respect, so hopefully we can get California Crossing soon on that list uh to be able to resolve that one. Other than that, I don't have anything.
Um Chief, anything, Chief?
No, good, awesome.
I'll make a motion to approve the acknowledgement of the city manager's report.
Motion, motion made and second it, with all, uh with that said, uh all those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye, all those who oppose do the same, motion carries. At this time, we'll acknowledgement of department head reports, uh questions, comments, any, anything or motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the acknowledgement of department's report.
Okay, motion made.
Second.
And second it, all those in favor signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
All those who oppose do the same, motion carries, the time is now six thirty-seven, meeting adjourned.